Welcome to the City of LaGuardia's regular city council meeting. I would like to remind everyone to please sign your cell phones. Thank you. Pretty quickly, please call a roll of the city council members to go on the record as the attendance.
Councilmember LeBaron, absent. Councilmember Snell?
Here.
Councilmember Gascoigne, absent. Mayor Proten Mendoza?
Thank you.
Mayor Vasquez?
He just got it.
We have a call for the council.
Thank you. I would like to ask the council member Snell to make his reply.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our turn to change to the agenda.
There in.
Thank you. We do not have any presentations tonight. And so before we move on to our general public comment portion of the meeting, I just want to like to, I want to take this opportunity to just say happy holidays to everyone and thank you so very much for taking time out of your evening to join us. During the general public comment portion of this meeting, the call is to express concern not pertaining to items on the agenda tonight. Please note that in accordance with state law, the city council is not permitted to respond to any comments expressed by the public. If appropriate, staff will be directed to follow up with the speaker or the topic may be brought to the city council meeting for inspiration at a future date. For a member of the municipal court sector two twenty-one-four, point one five zero, all remarks must be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. The speaker will have a maximum of three minutes. When speaking, please avoid the green light and red light timer at the podium. The red light indicates that it is time for the next speaker to approach the podium. Should be good speaking. So quick, do we have any speakers left? I would have one speaker left and this for the camera. You may approach the podium.
Well, I'm going to read what I've read at El Cone City Council meeting because it pertains to all of our East County cities and well, actually the whole county. So, happy holidays. I realize you're not allowed to comment the public comments, so I'm asking you to think about preventing some of the programs that are referred to defendants by the county courthouse. The defendant's made a mistake, got caught, go to court, plead guilty and assign and refer to programs to learn to become better people. What I'm witnessing is bullying and harassment by some of the programs, which is creating an even more legal problem or a way to create more programs, you know, like anger management. Taking advantage of confusing people that are already, already have a mental illness seems like an easy way to yet create more programs. But as Turco used to say, it ain't right. Recently, I watched across a process that happened to a family member that I care about and that makes me angry. Anger is a normal human reaction to harassment, especially when you're seeing somebody that you care about being harassed and bullied. So, we got it taken care of. After I talked about this at the El Cone City Council meeting, the next day I went with a family member to the courthouse and we were so totally harassed. I had to take her out of that courthouse crying. So, oh, one more thing because I have a plan, I guess. This I kicked up at the courthouse or I can, maybe I gotta get this here as a comment. But this is great. This blue envelope program is so awesome. I'm going to share it with my family member and we're going to get her hooked up with this so that she doesn't get treated the way she did at the courthouse. And not only was she treated that way, so was I and that made me even more angry. But I did not drop the envelope. So I gotta go because I have a Christmas party to go to at Lido's. And since I'm, I'm not gonna give you the personal stuff. But anyway, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Thank you all for everything you do, including staff and lieutenant chief. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. And that completes our public comment portion of the meeting. We do not have a public hearing tonight and so we'll move on to item number two, which is the award of a contract. I did skip over the consent calendar. So I will take one step back and go to the consent calendar. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move approval second.
We have a motion and the second. First and quick, all the roll.
Yes, the motion was made by Mayor Proten Mendoza, second by councilmember Snell. Roll call vote. Councilmember Snell?
Aye.
Mayor Proten Mendoza?
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
The motion passes on a vote of three ayes and two absents.
Thank you. Now we will move on to item number two, which is the award of contract. CMAS number four dash two zero dash five six dash zero zero six in the Garland Company Incorporated for the purchase of roofing construction materials. I will turn this over to Izzy Murgia, who is our public works director to present the sound report.
Test, test, one, two. Good evening, mayor and members of the city council. The item before you this evening is a recommendation to award a contract to the Garland Company Incorporated for the purchase of roofing construction materials. Next slide, please. As a way of background, the city has a robust facility capital improvement program. As part of the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-two, four budget, the city council adopted close to two point three million dollars in facility capital improvements. A little more of that, a little more than seventy-five percent of that is dedicated to roof replacements and HVAC replacements. Again, this two point three million dollars does not include a street improvement project. This is specifically associated for, related to facilities and building envelopes. And as you can see there, it's broken out by category. Before we delve into the details of tonight's agenda item, I wanted to provide an overview of the roofing and HVAC replacement projects and the strategy that staff is adopting to complete this, complete these projects. While these projects are separate in their own respect from a trade and scope of work standpoint, staff's approach is to address them in tandem from a procurement and construction standpoint. We can stay on this slide here. Last fiscal year, staff completed a roof condition assessment, which assisted staff in developing and prioritizing requests for the, for the current year's FY twenty-three, twenty-four budget. As part of that budgeting process, the council approved roof replacements for the community center, fire station, city hall and the sheriff's substation, as well as repairs to the Lee house. Here I'm going to walk you through each of the noted facilities. Community Center, which is the facility that we're in now. This facility was graded the worst with a roofing condition assessment as failed. Several roof leaks, which I'm sure many of you have experienced during last winter storms. But pretty much what we're seeing with this facility is weathering of the roofing membrane. There's several leaks in the duct port, de-lamination of the flashing, you know, when you have HVAC equipment on the roof. Bents for the restrooms, you know, for sewer and air conditioning. A lot of those tie-ins to the roofing system are coming apart. The aggregate deterioration on this roof is significantly deteriorated. The aggregate or granule is essentially a product that is placed on the roof to help it last longer. When roofs deteriorate, that granule is pretty much, you know, it goes in the gutters, washes away. It's not there to protect the roofing system. The roof, the age of this roof is about thirty years, so we're definitely seeing the end of that life. Moving over to the fire station. The condition for the fire station was assessed as poor. There are three, for lack of better words, three essentially separate buildings for that encompass the fire station, as you see on the right hand, down the right hand corner. Kind of hard, difficult to see, but the long rectangular section is noted in orange down on the right hand side, which would be the most western, westernly side of the building, also known as kind of the living quarters of the fire, where the fire staff are at. We're proposing to replace the roof in that section as well as the roof over the bays and the administrative offices on the east side, which is the building or area noted and highlighted in red. You know, for this building, we're seeing peeling of the roof membrane. I can't even explain it. The roof is essentially peeling off, off the decking. You're seeing multiple points of failure with reverse, the pipe penetration, splits in the flashing, and again similarly degradation in the aggregate. Again, this roof is thirty years old and so it reaches useful life. Next slide, please. Turning our attention to the city hall and sheriff's substation. The condition for this facility is, was rated as poor. Really, the issue here is that there is a lot of equipment on this, on this building. And so all those tie-ins to the roofing system, the HVAC ducting system that is all around the facility, above or above the facility, you know, due to the lack of maintenance over the years. You're seeing a lot of exposures in the duct port, the flashing. Again, when we did the assessment, we took four samples of the roof and the various levels of this roof showed brittleness, which means it reaches useful life. And so we're, you know, that's why we decided to propose to replace this facility. Roofing here is somewhere in the range of fifteen to twenty, twenty years. The Lee house, the Lee house, surprisingly, the roof was actually in really good condition despite its, despite its age. The roofing, I think, was replaced somewhere in the nineteen nineties, but due to its steep slope on the roof, it's, you know, it's not absorbing a lot of water. Water hits it and it slides down, so it's, it's not deteriorating the roof as much. So for this, for this facility here, we're doing repairs only. So we're replacing several sheaves throughout the roofing system. We're also replacing the ridge cap, the ridge cap that goes essentially, you know, the center top of the roofing system. That will be replaced with a copper roof, a copper ridge cap, along with replacing the gutters with copper gutters. And with this particular facility, we consulted the historic society and presented them with the various options, a complete replacement to repairs. And their recommendation was the repairs. They wanted to keep the aesthetic of wood shegel look. You know, there's only, I think, one manufacturer that still produces wood shegels in the United States. And so while that was an option, you know, we wanted to keep that weathering historic look. We feel very confident that, you know, with the repairs, we'd be able to extend the roof life span for another ten to fifteen years. Next slide, please. So whenever you are undertaking roof replacements, you want to take a look at your HVAC systems. And when possible, you want to undertake both projects at the same time. So HVACs, you know, there's various components to those systems. Venting, condensers fans that integrate into the roofing system. So, you know, it's only, it only makes sense and it's best practice that when you're undertaking a roof project, that when possible, you replace your HVAC system as well, systems as well, so that during the construction of the various projects, the roofer can come in, take apart the existing roof. The HVAC contractor replaces or, you know, removes the existing HVAC equipment. They come in and replace the HVAC, HVAC equipment with new equipment and the roofer comes in and builds, comes in and builds around the new HVAC system and ties in all the penetrations, ensure that they're weatherproof and waterproof. And so for the integrity of ensuring that, you know, these projects completed properly, we also recommended HVAC replacements as part of the FY twenty-three, twenty-four projects. And so we'll be coming before the city council with that project, which will encompass, you know, the various replacements that you see up in the slide, where we're replacing, I think, in total over thirty HVAC systems in those facilities, as you see on the screen. Next slide. So the strategy that I had referenced earlier, for the roofing component, the strategy is to utilize a full service manufacturer, roofing manufacturer, to help us navigate the complexities involved in these roofing projects. These roofing projects are not your typical, you know, home replacement roof. There are, again, they're commercial grade, there's a lot of tie-ins. There's in some buildings, several levels. We're talking about parapet walls that require different type of applications. And so we've decided to utilize the Garland Company, who's a roofing manufacturer. They will provide the roofing material. That's, that will be the, that's the item before you this evening. But what distinguishes them is from, what distinguishes them as being a full service is that they are able to provide design solutions. And to talk a little bit more about that, you know, there are soft costs related to projects. Somebody has to put together the scope of work of the project. They're supposed to identify what needs to be replaced, how it's going to be replaced, what products are supposed to be used to replace such items. Unfortunately, you know, we don't have the expertise, you know, to do that in-house. And the Garland Company through this contract has been able to at least help us out with the soft costs. And so developing the design and the scope of work for the city. So we'll be able to utilize the scope of work, put it in the documents and put this project out to bid. The materials, you know, as being a roofing manufacturer, they are able to provide a thirty-year warranty on the roofing materials. So if down the line, something were to go wrong with the roof, they will guarantee the, the material. And then I'll talk about the later here in a bit. And then lastly, project management. This is the third element of the full service component. So there are project management skills or services. They will manage the project for the city on our behalf and ensuring being a point of contact or liaison with the private contractor, ensuring that the roofing gets installed per spec, specifications. The contract that's available for us to do this is available through the California Multiple Award Schedules. This is available through the State of California's Department of General Services. It's a cooperative purchasing program that's available to local agencies and state governments. And so we've elicited or decided to utilize this contract and this methodology, which is allowed per municipal code. So that's on the roofing standpoint. On the HVAC, which will come before the city council early next year and I'll provide a little bit more details on that. But on the HVAC component as well, we're using a similar approach. We'll be using a cooperative purchasing contract that is available to local and state agencies. We'll be using renowned or nationwide manufacturer, for lack of better words, where they will be design building our HVAC system to correlate with the construction of the roof. So we'll be using, we'll be using the roofing contractor and working together with the HVAC contractor in tandem to ensure that those projects are working together and that there will be a differentiation in not only scope of work, but usually when you have these types of projects and if something goes wrong, you have, you know, the roofing contractor pointing to the HVAC contractor and vice versa. So we're trying to eliminate that through this process. Next slide, please. So this slide here is just, is, was, is a table that's noted in your agenda report. And this slide here is meant to highlight the elements of the request this evening. So staff's recommendation is to award a contract to the Garland Company for the purchase of roofing materials, which amounts to four hundred and sixty-seven thousand seventy-five dollars and forty-six cents for the four various facilities. When you look at overall costs for a roofing project, usually it's like forty to sixty percent. Forty percent will be your material cost, sixty percent will be your labor cost. And we're at the forty-three, fifty-seven percent range. And we're, we, with the recommendation this evening, you know, we're recommending to issue a contract to the Garland Company one so that we can secure twenty-twenty-three pricing this year. We've been informed that the roofing industry will be seeing a ten percent increase in roofing costs and by securing pricing for twenty-twenty-three, we will ensure a, we will ensure a stable cost when we are ready to construct or install the project. And then the other item that I kind of wanted to mention with regards to the material costs. Commercial roofing projects have an average cost of eight to fifteen dollars per square foot. This project in total is forty-five thousand square feet and so it's an average cost of about ten dollars. So we're in that range. And so staff is pretty, feels very confident that the pricing is competitive. You know, again, we're, the, one of the benefits with going with this methodology is that we'd be able to hedge against contractors' markup. Essentially, when we bid this project cost, we can see markups anywhere from twenty to forty percent. And so we're trying to hedge against that as one of the benefits. And then the last couple of items that I wanted to mention with regards to this slide is that when you undertake these projects, you really have three options. One, staff can contract out with an architect so that they can develop the specifications for the roof and the HVAC, which then they provide with staff so that we can bid that out. Two, staff develops those specs in-house. Or three, you look to these types of partnerships where you partner with a full service manufacturer so you can get those specs provided to you as part of your overall project cost. And so that's the option that we're recommending this evening. Next slide, please. So next steps, with council's consideration this evening, if it were to approve the contract this evening, we would issue a purchase order to the Garland Company for the contracted amount. The purchase order would secure again the twenty-twenty-three pricing and would hold, would hold stable when the city is ready to complete this project. Staff is currently working on putting together the bid advertisement for this project. So again, I want to reiterate that despite going through this process, we're not excluding any local companies. All we're saying in here is the city's going to purchase the materials directly. It's going to supply those materials to whomever the private contractor may be that wins this job. And so the bid advertisement that we have scheduled for this project is scheduled to pass January through March. We're hoping to have the contract awarded either second meeting in March or first meeting in April. The next step would be to complete the HVAC design. And we're currently working with the set manufacturer on this process and we're finishing up, you know, that process to, for staff to come back to the city council with a contract. Next step would be awarding the HVAC replacement project. Again, this is a design build type of process and we're hoping to have, to come before the city council in the February timeframe with that. And then again, March, second meeting in March would be in the earliest possible where we come back to the city council with recommendation to award the roofing installation contract, utilizing the materials that were recommended we purchased this evening. And then construction schedule to be had during April to June. Obviously, there's a lot of complexities and moving parts with that schedule, especially on the construction side, but we're confident in the contractors that we're utilizing. Next slide, thank you. So staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution to award a contract utilizing the CMAS contract number four dash two zero dash five six dash zero zero six and B for the purchase of roofing construction materials from the Garland Company Incorporated in the amount of four hundred and sixty-seven thousand seventy-five dollars and forty-six cents and authorize the city manager to execute any necessary documents. That concludes staff's presentation and I'm happy to answer your questions.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I'll check with there in quick to see if we have any speakers left. And we do not have any speakers left, so I will start with round one of questionings, of questions. Two questions, please. Councilmember Snell?
Thank you for the presentation and getting this job done within twenty-twenty-three so we could take advantage of those prices. That's a significant savings, especially with the dollar amounts that we're talking about here. One of the things that I was curious about is whether or not we still have warranty left, manufacturer warranty left on the roof or the city hall sheriff's substation. It looks like it's only fifteen to twenty years old. Is there any warranty left on that?
No.
Wishful thinking. And then on the budget, I, and this is probably for the city manager. I'm trying, I was trying to go back and take a look at the budget and find out how much we had budgeted for these roofing projects, but can you tell me whether or not this is within what we had originally budgeted for and we're staying within those limits?
We are absolutely staying within those limits. I just, Mr. Murgia just shook his head and he's responsible for it and he's responsible to stay within the budgetary amounts. So that really is a responsibility of them, but yes, we are within the budget and they're in the capital project. If you look at our budget inside the capital project or our funding, I think we get a larger tax. larger tax identifier as infrastructure or facility upgrade. So it's not going to exactly say HVAC, but the capital identifies that in the capital program.
Yeah, we're just a, the city manager's comments, I believe we're somewhere in the ballpark of like two hundred thousand, but what would you put?
Mayor Proton Mendoza. So I just want to confirm, all we're approving right now is the purchase of the materials?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, but this company, included with the cost of the materials, they provide design solutions, the materials and the project. So that's all included in that.
Correct.
Okay. And then, then did we go out and solicit and store the actual labor?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, great. But then they're going to manage the project after we find some of the needs.
That's correct, yes. They'll manage the project, as well as they have prepared the scope of work or the specifications for the roof.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to clarify that. And again, I want to thank you for bringing this agenda forward as roofing is very important to the structures that are owned by the city. I was sitting on the get one of the slides, the background slide, and there it outlines FY 2023-24 facilities capital improvement program, which is two-point-two million plus. And in that, it says roof replacement, and it includes solar option, which is one-point-two-eight-seven-nine-hundred. And here, when we flip forward to the slide of estimated roof replacement projects cost, there's an asterisk at the bottom, and it says excludes potential solar costs. And so I just wanted a little clarification about the exclusion of the potential solar cost, and is it, the solar, is that under consideration as we are making repairs to our?
Yes, so the, to answer your question, it is being taken into consideration. The solar options is being handled under the HVAC side of the house, the HVAC contractor. And so it wasn't included as part of our roofing construction project, because we're still going through that design process with the HVAC company. And they're taking a look at or evaluating the building's energy use, and determining whether or not any electrical panels need to be upgraded to be able to accommodate the new solar equipment, in addition to, you know, installing, for lack of better words, it's, there's a component to the solar system called a heat pump that would essentially kind of power the HVAC systems. And so there's an electrical analysis that is being completed to determine whether or not we have the capacity for that. So as part of, so we are looking at the solar options. We don't have the cost as part of this project that will be brought forward as part of the HVAC project and contract.
Thank you. And so since the number is lower under the estimated roof replacement project cost on that slide, it is because it took out the cost, the assumption of the cost of the solar option. But that will roll forward when we get to the HVAC replacement.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I will do another round of questions, starting with Councilmember Snow.
One of the things that I wanted to highlight here is we've gone through the buildings, and the senior center was excluded. You had mentioned it briefly in yours, but we, when we were setting out our goals and talking about what we wanted to do there and what our vision was for the senior center, we decided to invest the money instead of replacing the roof, looking at using the senior center as a, senior center plus affordable housing and what we could do there. And so I just wanted to highlight that it wasn't included in this report because of the fact that we were trying to use the senior center more effectively and address housing issues in our community. So I don't really have any additional questions. I just, I can go ahead and comment right now, right? So I just wanted to highlight that I really do love the fact that this comes with a thirty-year warranty, and I think that's a significant advantage, as we see sometimes these deteriorate much more quickly, particularly because a lot of, this building in particular have flat roofs and deteriorating. And so thirty years would be advantageous, and since these dollar amounts are so big, we were lucky to have the extra infusion of ARCA funds to be able to help move these events, but I think the warranty is a critical component of that. Additionally, I don't know, in the residential housing industry, there's sometimes up to fifty-year warranties on roofing materials, and so I just want to make sure that we're maximizing warranties that are out there, so that we don't incur these kinds of expenses. We're using materials that will be cost-effective in the long term. I, like, if we can get this done today, we will be saving forty-seven thousand dollars, which is a significant savings by being able to push this contract forward at this time. This is, this is really quick action, as far as governments go, to try and meet the goals and budget that we had outlined in the budget in our community discussions. I have sat in closed session while it was already raining on us, we're getting dripped on, and so it's exciting to see that our buildings are going to be given the repairs and replacements that they need to go on for many years to come. So I appreciate that.
Mayor Proton Mendoza.
I met with the city manager last week, and I had a whole list of things that I wanted to talk to her about, and one of the things at the top of the list was our capital improvement program that we had discussed earlier in the year. So, you know, I was able to cross that out, so, after I read this agenda higher. So, thank you. I'm glad, also, I'm very glad that we're moving forward on this. If we don't take care of our, I mean, this seems like a lot of money, but it is a lot of money, but if we don't take care of our facilities, they're just going to come crashing down around us. And we can't ask our employees, or us, or people in here, to sit in a room with a roof that might fall down with no air conditioning or heating. We need to keep our facilities intact, so, thank you. And with that, I would like to move approval of this item.
And I will take that as a motion. Let's see. Here, with this particular project, we all know that maintenance and replacement is really a part of the work that we approve, that city workers do, and those who contract do, in order to maintain our quality of life. And there's no way around it. Everything has a shelf life. But what is good to know is that for us, when money is available, we take that money and we invest it right back into our community. And this will be a true demonstration of the people's tax dollars at work, and the grant dollars that we see at work. And so I'm really happy that I'm able to do my part to move these projects forward. But also, as pointed out, there is a significant cost savings on behalf of the city. I would say we always remain frugal, and at the same time, we get it done. So thank you so much for moving forward. We do have a motion. I'll check to see if we have a second. Second, we have a motion and a second. I'll ask our city clerk to call the roll.
A motion was made by Mayor Proton Mendoza, seconded by Councilmember Snow. Roll call low. Councilmember LeBaron, absent. Councilmember Gastel, absent. Councilmember Snow.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Mendoza.
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez.
Aye.
Motion passes three, zero, two, two, absent.
Thank you. I don't remember jury is the employee equity compensation plan, and I'll turn this over to Lydia Romero, who is our city manager, to present the report.
Thank you very much. And the city court will forward this slide to myself. Next slide, please. So I'm pleased to, let me look through the slide, so I'm just getting used to it. I'm pleased to come to you this year at the final meeting of the year with the employee equity study. As council can remember, for those of you who are here, and just a little history for those of you that are new, the council took an historic step last year to approve the equity compensation plan for employees, to help us make sure that we make incremental steps to right-size our salaries comparative to market. So we're looking at market median. The reason why we need to do that is, one, we need to make sure that our employees are paid viable market rate for the work that they do on behalf of the residents of London Grove. But second of all, as you can see in the slide, it really is for market competitiveness. We get the best and the brightest, the smartest, those that can do a lot with less, because that's what we demand here at London Grove. It helps with retention issues, it helps with recruitment issue, it helps with employee morale, because the work that they do are valued, and that shows up in their salary. If they don't have a viable market equity wage, it shows that they don't, aren't appreciated in the marketplace, or appreciated by their employer. And I can tell you that our staff, although small, is incredibly mighty and does a lot with compensating. And then succession planning. This allows us to create the new future leaders of London Grove, and allows them to take that step for a leadership role, because you would like to keep those high-performing employees within the organization. So just to go over the equity component plans that the council approved, and it was an attachment B to the staff report, it really has a salary philosophy, it requires us, or requires human resources to do yearly market compensation surveys. It allows, it requires a what we call a differential, or an internal alignment amongst the employees, mid-management, and management. And that again, is needed for succession planning, and I'll show you a slide in a second of that, looks like, because you want incentive for employees to take the next step. So there should be an internal alignment. Equity adjustments will happen in January or the first pay period of each year, and that is really position-based. So we're looking at positions based in the marketplace. Unlike the COLA, which happens, should be council-granted, or it's in an MOU, COLA applies across the board to everyone that are non-contracted positions. So COLAs don't look at market equity, COLAs just give everybody the same amount of raise, regardless of where they are in the marketplace. And then, the last component of your plan is what I call fiscal responsibility and long-term stability. We want to ensure that these raises aren't going to put the city in the same context of the state of creating a sixty-eight billion-dollar backlog or deficit. We need to make sure that these are sustainable in the future, that we can balance the employee compensation as well as the service levels for residents. So it's balancing that that we have to do. So again, it's incremental steps. Next slide. This is the, what I call the goal statement of the City Council that was approved, and I'll read it. The city of London Grove endeavors to have an equity compensation plan for its employees. It is the goal to set salary bands within five percent of market median. It's a goal. It's not a mandate, but it's a goal. And I will show you in a second, that it might be in a future slide, that we are making headway to that goal, which is not there yet. The equity plan covers all, everybody in the fire group and everybody in the miscellaneous group. It does not cover contracted employees, and the two contracted employees are myself and the city attorney. And just as a reminder, the City Council approved a COLA increase this year for all of the general employees. Next slide. So I want to show you the fire group. The fire group contains firefighters, fire engineers, fire captains, and battalion chiefs. In the staff report, exhibit three A is the total compensation survey for the fire group. They consist of the two heartland cities, El Cajon and Lamesa, as well as an agreed-upon category in the MOU. So unlike the miscellaneous group, the components of the survey is in the MOU. It's the top step, it's scheduled overtime, medical, employee purse pickups, so there's employees that have to pick up their purse pickup, paramedic play, education incentive, and uniform allowance, all included in the survey data. The one thing I, next slide. So what I'd like to show you is, we made actually a very significant movement from last year. So this year, we are at market or above market with all of our classifications in fire. Last year, in firefighter and paramedic, we were seven and a half, seven-point-eight-six or six-point-eight-zero below market in both the London Grove PAPRA and London Grove Classic Members. And for those of you that don't know the difference, PAPRA members are those employees that became public employees after 2012, or when the retirement improvement changes that was voted on by the legislature and approved by Governor Brown came into effect. Any public employee that was in our system prior to 2012 is what we consider a classic member. Your firefighter/paramedic category will see your largest PAPRA members. The other two classifications, fire engineer and fire captain, tend to have more classic members in them, and actually in our pool, they're all classic members. So they've been here post-2012 as employees. As you can see, the fire engineer position, with market median, we're at zero percent to right-of-market median. And then fire captain, we're just a tad bit over of market median with the survey groups. So again, last year, we made some significant investments into our public safety groups that we were able to accomplish this. Next slide. Next group is the miscellaneous group, and this group is all of the rest of the employees that aren't in fire. Those are your clerical, technical, public work, sanitation, professional employees, mid-managers, and directors. That's one big broad group of miscellaneous employees. The survey that we did for them, and it was quite large, is part of exhibit A two. The survey was a little bit different than fire. We looked at only compensation, not any other categories, so we can say even in the marketplace, and it's the same thing we did last year. We used the cities of Imperial Beach, Lamesa, El Cajon, and San Tito. We chose last year, when we were talking about this staff recommended and the council supported, using Ivy, because it was sort of closest to us in demographics, closest to us in revenue base, closest to us in size. The other, the other, East County cities, we measured, because those are really our measuring partners, and that's where our market median is, and that's where some of our employees will go. In fact, we lost four employees to the city of Lamesa in one year. So they steal everybody. Now, I want to share with you, we did a, started all forty-six job classifications and tried to match the best we could with all of the job positions that we have open. This year, we had three classifications that were forty-seven to thirty-seven, thirty percent below median. Last year, we had eleven. This year, we had thirty-three classifications that were twenty-nine percent to five and seven, seven, point seven-three percent below market median. Last year, we had twenty-five. So we're making some incremental moves, getting the top tier of the height below market median into sort of the median market median. And then, last year, this year, we have fourteen classifications that at, near, or above market median. Last year, we had eight. So that shows we are making some significant improvements on some of our employee classifications. Next slide. So I know this is really, really hard to hear, Reid and I, I definitely apologize. But it is in your staff report as the attachment to the resolution in Exhibit A. And what this shows is the classification by job title. The differential, meaning the compaction rate of the top tier. And then the new proposed monthly step based on the equity study. So the new, so everybody will, in this, that has a, not within range, is getting somewhere between 2.5 to 7.5% movement, January 1, moving the whole classification and class table over there. And as you can see, and I'm going to point this out, that your managers are paid to the city manager's salary. So making sure that, that I am the ceiling, or the city manager's salary is the ceiling of your department directors and your leadership team. That's the reason why most of them are in the 30%. Although it's not in the salary, my salary is substantially below market. So I act as the ceiling for them. Everybody else really is getting closer and closer to the range. And again, nearly every position that we have that is currently filled will be getting some sort of small bump. And as we did last year, once we put the, the council approves this, we will create the new salary classification. And if somebody is on, say, the C step and the new classification puts them on the D step, they'll automatically go up. Everybody will either gain some more money, go up in a step. Nobody will ever lose money. And then the one thing I do want to point out is those positions that are within range or at or above market median will not be penalized. Their salary will stay exactly the same. They just won't get an equity increase at all. This proposed change for '24 keeps the integrity of the internal alignment. In most of these positions, we're trying to make the goal of the differential. There are some positions where not 100% within the differential. We need to still make some movement on some of the top. And these small increment changes that we're making, it helps us not lose so much market ground that we have been losing since 2016, before the council had a top. Next slide. All of this comes with money, and there's a price tag. Luckily, it is not as large as it was last year. Last year was $65,000 to get everybody in the equity. This is around $12,000. And just remember, all employees are split-funded. So 8,000 of that 12,000, approximate 12,000, is general fund, and then 4,000 is other funds. And this also, all of this fund includes what we call roll-up costs. So it is workers' compensation costs, it is additional costs because every time we raise an employee's salary, our retirement rates go up, or our retirement salary goes up. So that is included in all of the roll-up costs. Staff is recommending moving forward with the equity adjustments because our revenue projections for this year in property tax is going to be approximately $500,000 higher than what we budgeted. We're looking at two property tax line items. One is vehicle license in lieu, and then actual property taxes. And the reason why is, we've had a lot of overturn of what we call legacy properties, or post Prop 13 properties, and people are selling them. When they get sold, they do a market adjustment. And so those properties now are paying market rate on their property tax opposed to a pre, pre or post Prop 13 rate. So we've seen a high increase. That will set a new base for our property tax. I don't, and according to our property tax consultants, we don't see that happening in the future years. Most of the properties that are legacy-owned, and legacy is 15 years plus owned, we pretty much emptied most of those properties. So it looks like for the majority of Lemon Grove's next decade, we'll have a pretty consistent property tax. And then vehicle license in lieu of property tax, that is a state, state government-initiated formula that gives cities property tax in lieu of getting their full allocation of vehicle license fees. If a council approves this, this will be effective January 1, or technically, the first pay period in January, which may have about two days of 2023 in there, just to make a very clean break. Last slide. Staff recommends approving the resolution to adopt the proposed 2024 employee equity compensation. Happy to answer any questions that come to me.
Thank you. I'll check with our city clerk to see if we have any speaker slips for this item. We do not have any speaker slips for this item. And so I will look to councilmembers' notes and questions.
So there's still a pretty significant gap for the managers. And I'm concerned that we might be losing good people. Did you run calculations to see how much it would increase to try and get them a little closer within the range to move them up? Or why did you select 12,000 as a good number to stick at?
So for the senior managers, mid-managers, and department directors, we wanted to keep the integrity of the compaction rate. So that's why we couldn't make wholesale movement to everybody because then we're going to be losing that internal alignment. And so we need to keep that internal alignment to keep that integrity. And again, remember, the city manager's salary, whether I'm sitting here or somebody else is sitting here, I'm the ceiling, or the city manager's position is the ceiling. And that really dictates the salary level for your assistant city manager, your directors, and your mid-managers. So you've got to be mindful of that compaction.
So I think I understand this. So not only are we trying to balance our issues regarding how much money we have available, but also we have to consider the internal alignment. Or basically, we want to make sure that suddenly, like, an assistant city manager doesn't start making more money than our city manager. Is that right?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay. And then, one of the other issues is, just want to make sure that we're able to continue to keep closing this gap. We really value our city staff. I have been consistently impressed with the dedication that they have. But to keep good people, you have to pay them. And we don't want to lose them to Lamesa or any other place. So I appreciate that, and the consistent efforts to move this forward. Hold up, any other questions until next round?
Thank you. Mayor Protem Mendoza?
I don't have any questions. This isn't new for us. We've been talking about it for some time. So I'll just wait for my caller.
And I do not have any questions at this time. But I do know that pay equity is important. And it's because we all have to live. And I appreciate the staff's patience as we try to do what we can, what we have as people are bigger this month. So, and I will do one more round of questions. Sorry, I went to the councilmember's room.
One of the issues I wanted to highlight on the chart that you have, sorry, is the slide right after the miscellaneous group. It talks about the proposed changes. Oh, wait, there we go. On that slide, there's classifications. For example, for assistant city manager and for the deputy city and city clerk. Right now, we don't have anyone filling those positions. So I just wanted to highlight that we're not still fully staffed. It would be ideal for us to be able to get these additional positions open that we have available. And as we continue to increase our revenues, hopefully, we'll be able to fill those positions. There's still a number of them outstanding. I know in the staff report, it was easier to see which ones hadn't been filled. They were separately highlighted in blue. And we have a number of those positions. We've made some strides in authorizing additional positions this year, which is very exciting. And I hope city staff feels the love and that we're trying to get them more help. But I think ideally, as we generate more revenues in this town, that we'll see more positions filled, and that will increase the efficacy and efficiency of everyone involved.
Thank you, councilmember Snow, for pointing that out. These are all of the classifications that have been approved by city council. Some are filled, most are not. And yes, in ideal world, I would love to have all of these positions in the city because we would be able to handle all of the work that is demanded of us by the residents and the priorities of council. But we just are not there yet. So we hope to get there. Again, this, look at this classification and internal alignment is also a succession plan. So if I have somebody in an associate planner's position, and they're doing such great work, and we want to keep them, and we think that they're the next level, we can then place them in the senior planner level, which is a higher-level position, which tends to have a little bit of supervisory skillset, and that rewards them for taking that next step. So this is also a succession plan that will help those employees that are, say, working towards getting a higher, in a higher classification to do more work.
Mayor Protem Mendoza?
My only comment is, thank you for bringing this to us, like, a little year ago, and for, you know, following through with this. We need to keep our employees. We've lost a lot of employees the past few years. And we have good people, and we want to keep them. And this is the only way that we're going to do it. I talked, I'm not going to throw anybody under the bus, but I've talked to a former city employee who told me how much she, oops, he or she misses working for the city of Lemon Grove. And it was so sad to leave, but just couldn't afford to not, to support her family, could not afford to stay in Lemon Grove. And that just makes me so sad that people have to make that choice. So that I'm going to move aside.
And we did have a motion. Obviously, being a second for this particular item. But again, thank you for bringing this item forward and for making the recommendations for our consideration tonight. You know, that is very important. And what I do know, and let us see, with our staff is that they love their jobs. And often, will wear more than one hat just to make this city work. And I acknowledge that and recognize that. And it is appreciated by each and every one of us more than we ever know. And so just know that given the budget that we have, we're the city. We're doing everything that we can to make sure that our speaks to advocacy of their way. And this right here helps to support that effort. So as mentioned, we do have a motion and a second. And I'm taking a second?
Second.
So we have a second, and I ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember LeBaron absent, councilmember Gastel absent. Councilmember Snow?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Mendoza?
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
The motion passes on the vote of three ayes, zero noes, and two absent.
And I think that our city manager would like to share forth.
I would like to thank, I would like to thank the council for recognizing the hard work and the many, many hats our city staff does. We've got an amazing team of folks that really will just get the work done and still have a good time with each other. So we've got a really good team now. I want to keep this really good team. They're young, they're energetic, and I think this is going to take, this particular team is going to take Lemon Grove to the next step. And thank you again for recognizing we're making incremental steps. I wish I could give everybody the full median, but I think incremental steps shows that we really care, from a management standpoint, that we really care about the employees, and we really take this seriously. And councilmember Mendoza was here, Mayor Vasquez was here, that I've been trying to do this for many, many years, and we've finally got to a position where we're cool, because they deserve it. And hopefully, we'll stay in this position for years to come so we can then value our employees the way the market values our employees. Thank you all.
Thank you so very much. I don't know, or is the city manager employment agreement? So there is a minute, and I'll turn this over to Kristen Steinke, or city attorney, to present the report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the city council. This item is a recommendation from the City Manager Performance Evaluation Subcommittee, comprised of Mayor Vasquez and former Mayor Protem Gastel, now city councilmember Gastel. After a favorable performance evaluation for the city manager, the Subcommittee is recommending an increase of 3% to the city manager's base salary. The resolution attached to the staff report amends the city budget to authorize a 3% increase to Ms. Romero's base salary from $179,368 to $184,756. That's a difference of $5,388 over a year's time. The 3% increase will take the place of the annual automatic 2.5% CPI increase so that the increase is 3% and no more. So it wouldn't be 2.5% plus 3%, it's just the 3%. This item is a recommendation from the Subcommittee regarding the City Manager's Performance Evaluation, which was conducted. And so with that, I will turn this over to Mayor Vasquez.
Thank you.
I thank you so very much. And before I move forward, I will see if we have any speaker slips. And we do not have any speaker slips. I'll highlight here that the process did include two close session meetings, and that each and every council member is able to provide input. And the input was shared. And the recommendation, this whole process, is 3% rather than 2.5%. Technically, it's just a half percent higher than what's written in the title. And so I wanted to go ahead and see if anyone has any questions. I'll start with councilmember Snow.
One of the questions I have is because of the internal alignment. We just went through that in the last one. And we looked at how all of our managers' salaries kind of have to stay at a lower level, at a depressed level, because our city manager is, I think, in the county, the lowest-paid city manager. And by more than that, at least $20,000 to $40,000, is my understanding, having communicated with other city managers to look at their salaries. So one of the questions is, why are we only increasing it by 3%? It's my understanding that for many years prior, our city manager did not take advantage of the 2.5% increase that the contract has. But last year, I believe, was one of the first years she ever took the 2.5% that's included in that contract. And why are we only increasing, why is the suggestion only 3% rather than the 5.5%?
I just wanted to comment quickly on a couple of points you raised in your comment, which is, you are correct that the city manager in Lemon Grove is the lowest-paid city manager in the region. And there's a salary study that is... And there is a salary study that is attached to the staff report as Attachment C, that shows all of the city manager's salaries in the region. The next lowest-paid city manager is forty-five thousand dollars above the salary of the city manager in Lemon Grove. Another issue that you pointed out was there is an automatic two-point-five percent increase for cost of living in the city manager's contract. And that has been in the contract since 2016, when she was initially hired. But she, because of budgetary considerations during those, especially those first few years, the city manager waived the cost of living increase. So she has not received a salary increase ever while she's been the city manager. And just recently, in 2022, implemented and affected that two-point-five percent cost of living increase, which is why she's just a little bit higher than the one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that she was hired at. So I just wanted to point out a couple of those issues that you highlighted. And then I would turn it over to Mayor Vasquez.
Well, I think our city attorney said all the things that I was about to say. I'm sorry. No, it's okay. Thank you for providing that clarity. But what I also know is that in discussions in previous years of the contracts, and even the two-point-five percent, while the city was challenged financially, and we were making adjustments and not providing increases for city staff, the one thing that the city manager said, and I remember this, she said, "How can I take a two-point-five percent increase when other staff, you know, are not able to receive an increase?" And so that demonstrates that she has compassion and understanding that when, you know, staff is challenged financially, her value system is that I will not take an increase while others cannot receive an increase as well. And so the same city manager, she thinks about others before she thinks about herself. And that's the reason why she did not receive the increases. It was voluntary. And I think that is something commendable, because everybody does not like that. So I hope that answered your question.
So piggybacking off my earlier question, so I'd be curious, is can the city support, if we gave her the two-point-five percent, could we also give her the three percent increase? Because we gave all of our city staff a three percent full increase this last year. And because she's not taken advantage of the opportunity that she had earlier for the sake of the city to make sure we made it through, could we do a five-point-five percent increase rather than just a three percent increase? Is that something that's viable?
And I think we would have to take a look at the budget to see if it is.
I'll turn it over to Kristin for more comments.
You can amend the resolution or the recommendation that's in front of you to include an additional increase, which would use the, you're suggesting the two-point-five percent plus an additional three percent. So that would be a, sorry, a three-point-five, I'm sorry, a five-point-five percent increase. You can certainly do that through the amended, through an amended resolution tonight.
And so what would the actual salary be? And where would that put her on the scale as it relates to all of the other city managers who are paid here in the county of San Diego?
I'll have to do a quick calculation, but it looks like it would be one hundred and seventy-nine. Her current salary is, sorry. One seventy-nine, three-sixty-eight, plus a five-point-five percent increase, which is nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five point twenty-four, which comes out to, she would be at one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two-thirty-three point twenty-four. And she would still be, she would still be the lowest-paid city manager in the region. The next lowest-paid city manager makes two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars in Imperial Beach. So that gets her a lot, that gets her closer. You know, not, she's still, she's still the lowest paid, but, you know, I think it certainly does more for the increase. Almost doubles the increase.
I thank you, Mayor Potem Mendoza?
Yeah, I like that suggestion I did from you. Also, and if you think about it, it's only, it's less than a thousand dollars a month. Lydia's been with us, I think, seven years now. And she's, she's received a favorable review this year. But as far as I know, she's received a favorable review every year that she's been here. And this is, you know, we can, the process, we individually rate her and compile our own comments about her performance. And then the committee puts all those comments together and makes kind of a narrative of what we all said. And I'm always surprised at how, and we don't, you know, talk to each other about it, of course, outside of the closed session, but I'm always surprised at how similar we are in our opinions of our city manager's work. So, and it's not all, it's not all fives. You know, she gets, she gets some threes and fours. But for the most part, we are all on the same page in that we're very pleased with her work. Frankly, I think it's a little embarrassing to me that we pay our city manager so little for all the work that she does. And she's, she's worked well over forty hours a week, more like fifty. I think she, maybe she takes one day off from her day, maybe. And I'm very appreciative of the work that she does. We don't always see eye to eye, we disagree on some things, but we're always able to talk it, to talk it through and come up with some kind of a solution. So I would support a five-and-a-half percent increase, especially since she's only received one, two-and-a-half percent increase in seven years that she's worked with.
I thank you so very much. And I will do a second round of questions. You can provide comments as well, regarding with councilmembers, no?
So I think recognizing the city manager, a lot has been said, but as a rookie city council member, I have really come to appreciate the city manager's experience. I also have been able to, and my role is that with the League of Cities, I've been able to see her operate with other city managers and other council members and mayors from different cities. And there's a lot of behind politics. And politics isn't about one person. One person changes very little. Politics is very much about relationships. And in order for our city to elevate itself and to be able to have the nice things that we want and cherish for our families, we have to build those relationships. And Lydia has been able to cultivate those relationships with other groups. We've been able to do great things in the East County region because of the relationships she's able to leverage. And she brings us along with them. I just was, became second vice president in the League of Cities for our region. And a lot of that's because of the influence that she has in promoting our city's interests. And so I really appreciate the time that she's taken to mentor me, the relationships that she has with her city staff. Being able to keep who we've been able to keep with forty-seven percent differences between market rate and what we pay here is quite a feat. And she's been able to do that. She's also her own critic. And she knows where she's weak. She was able to identify those issues and has been working to increase and do better. But our ability to attract new talent is in large part because of the mentorship she can provide to new people who are seeking to enter into the city, the city staff world. And so I think we should be able to show that appreciation through this increase. Plus, it's going to benefit our retention ability with the other city managers, because we've discussed that linear alignment we need to do in order to be able to, if she doesn't move up, then none of the other people can move up. And so we need to make sure that everybody is moving closer towards equity with their peers and throughout the county. And so I think that this is a well-earned raise. I think we will continue to see great things out of our city manager, and I want her to stay for a very long time.
Mayor Potem Mendoza?
I have nothing to add. I'll, except I'll make a motion to approve this item, councilman.
I thank you. And we have a motion. And there is one thing that I'll say before I seek a second. And is that the city manager keeps the city moving forward. And she's always thinking about the future of the city and not just today. And strategizing and making plans so that when there is change among people, there is policy in place and working, real working strategies in place so that Lemon Grove continues to be a viable city. And her commitment is truly in the work, but also making sure that mentorship opportunities prevail. And I think when you have someone who is laser-focused, but also willing to train and to provide opportunities to promote for others, that truly demonstrates what a real leader is. And that is something that we have sitting right here at this platform. I know we've said it already, she is the lowest-paid city manager in the entire county of San Diego. But the hours that she puts in to this city is tremendous. She really pours into this city, and she pours into people. And, you know, sees a change, everything changes. And the day that there is a real change, I know that we will realize the real impact that Lydia Romero has had on the city of Lemon Grove. So I just wanted to put that out there in the ether to let everyone know how much we appreciate her and her leadership. And we do have a motion. And I'd like to know if we have a second?
Second?
And we have a second. I will ask our city clerk to call the roll.
Motion was made by Mayor Potem Mendoza, seconded by councilmember Snow, roll call vote. Councilmember LeBaron absent. Councilmember Gastel absent. Councilmember Snow?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Mendoza?
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Motion passes on three ayes, zero noes, and two absents.
I thank you so very much. Moving on to our city council meeting reports. This section of me is dedicated to all reports from the city council.